...passed out to all council members. She was thanking us for our efforts to protect our wellhead. Thank you for taking the time to do this. Any other reports and communications from other elected officials? Mayor Wile?
Couple things. Let me just mention that we, there's going to be a series of committee meetings for the Zero Waste Initiative. This is throughout the county. This is a group that's been put together from the Ohio University Rural Action, looks like, as well as Sugar Bush Foundation. The concept there, of course, is how to make our solid waste, reduce our solid waste in landfills. They're going to have a series of meetings starting, let's see, April 10th already come and gone, but April 18th Nelsonville Public Library. 23rd will be at Marion Township. They're covering both counties, obviously. Alexander High School will be May 3rd. And the last one, actually, is May 31st, which is Athens Community Center. So that's the most local. That will be at 6:30 in the community center. And this is really to get people's ideas and a discussion of what it looks like for zero waste, identifying recycle and waste needs, it says. Let's see. You can RSVP at zerowaste@ruralaction.org or call up 767-4938. And again, this is just pulling in information. Other things, of course, there's spring cleanup coming next week, so everybody can put as many bags out as they choose all next week on your pickup day. And I'm telling you, because by the time next Monday rolls around, it'll already be too late for the Monday people, which is myself included. So you can put as many bags out. If you want to know about it, just call Service Garage, 592-3343. And the Planning Commission is of course going to have that public hearing for the rezonia far east side. That's May 2nd, 7:15, just so you know. And let's see, the last item is the arts, parts and recreation in conjunction with a class, I think it's Dr. Nita James class is going to be doing, looking at making a, what would you call it? Basically, a plan. They're looking at strategic plan to put together a plan for the arts, parts and recreation. U.S. stakeholders, of course, are going to be interviewed by the class individually, I believe. But there will be a meeting for the public, 7:15. And I believe it is at, I think, I take it back. I think it's 7:15 and it's April 25th. So, wait a second, I take it back. 5:30, April 25th. Okay. And again, this is for the public to come in and they'll be interviewed. They'll have round tables for what you want to see happen to the arts, parts and recreation as it moves forward.
I'm sorry, where I was writing?
Community center. And it's, as I say, Athens Community Center, April 25th, 5:30 p.m. And again, really, the council members, I think, will be approached individually. You don't have to go to this, but you're welcome to as well. And I say that just because, you know how sometimes when legislators get in front of a public forum, sometimes it distorts the space? And that's all I really have. Unless you have anything to add?
I just, I have also provided to council the statement of position from the City of Athens Wellhead Protection Team.
Auditor Heck?
No report.
Law Director Lang?
No report, Mr. President.
Okay, we're going to move on to ordinances for third reading, then. Ordinance 4212, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2012, 2013, Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant.
Excuse me?
Introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Sorry, before we get too much farther along, did anyone get a message about approving the auditor reports?
March.
I just called. I know.
I talked with her.
That's okay.
I talked to Kathy and forgot to tell Chris.
Is it possible for someone to make a motion to approve our March?
May I make a motion?
Okay, we're going to move back here.
I would like to make a motion to approve the March auditor's reports.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the March auditor's report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to ordinances for third reading. Member Butler, ordinance 4212.
Thank you. Now that I'm completely thrown off. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to adopt ordinance 4212.
Second.
This particular ordinance, for a quick reminder to everyone, which we have discussed before, is regarding the DARE program, which is in its 24th year in the City of Athens, or Athens City School District. And Officer Crossen has been in his 18th year with the program. Essentially, this just quickly allows the mayor to enter into this application process. Thank you.
We have heard from community members, members of city council, all of whom applaud Officer Crossen for the work he's done in this position. All those in favor of ordinance 4212 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 4212 is adopted. Ordinance 4312, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids for construction and construction engineering of the 2012 Water System Improvements Project 264 and declaring an emergency. Again, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 4312.
Second.
This is an ordinance that we, on this particular project, is something we've looked at length and discussed immensely. It's pretty extensive in that it's going to replace a vast majority of dilapidated old water line within the city. We're looking at 1950s-era cast iron water line. And I believe, as I acknowledged before, we're looking at a total of over 8,000 feet of line to be replaced, along with the addition of 17 new.
Mayor?
Essentially, we're outsizing some of the pipes, making them larger, and replacing some of the hydrants that are older, as well as putting new ones in. And it'll be three separate areas of the city. If I remember, near Eastside, Lantin, Harris area.
Correct.
Jones Woods.
Terrace River View, correct.
Okay.
And then West Union and Schaefer.
West Union, Schaefer, okay. So it's kind of scattered all over the city, but it's areas that need to be, that have been having high water breakage, and many of the valves are past their time.
Thank you.
All those in favor of ordinance 4312 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Ordinance 4312 is adopted. Ordinance 4412, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Gazi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 4412. This ordinance, as we discussed in committee in the first introduction, allows the city to dispense of some vehicles that we have possession of but no real use for. These were taken into possession by the Athens Police Department, and we're authorizing them to be disposed of by auction or sale or scrapped if there's no resale value to them.
Any questions? All those in favor of ordinance 4412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ordinance 4412 is adopted. Ordinance 4512, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year 2013, federal fiscal year 2012. Member Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 4512.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh. Let me describe it first. I'm getting ahead of myself. Sorry about that. Again, this is approving the mayor to go into, or enter into, an agreement, apply for, and enter into an agreement for a Ohio Department of Development, Community Development Block Grant. We have been successful in receiving these grants in the past that have gone to a number of different things, to include the Fairview Fort Street steps or stairs improvements, Grosvenor Street slip repairs, some of the lighting on Court Street has been, money has been used for that as well. The money is basically designed for revitalizing neighborhoods, economic development, improving community facilities and services. Yeah, now to the mayor.
And again, this is formula money that comes through and is calculated almost every year. This is for the next year, is 2013. I did receive a letter April 10th for the awarding of our 2012 Community Development Formula Grant. What you've, they've basically stated, if they've changed a little bit how they're going to do this. Normally, the money would come from the state, but what they've decided to do is take it out of revolving loan fund, since it has been dormant. You'll read further down your next couple ordinance, one is to enter, I think, actually the next one, going to with Buckeye, agreement with Buckeye Hill to administer our revolving loan fund. But as you can see, they've decided that rather than, since it hasn't been doing anything, they're pulling money out of our revolving loan fund. So the anticipation is, and the amount awarded is $85,000. The amount that has to come out of revolving loan fund, if we choose to accept, which we will, of course, is $85,000. So we have about $200,000 in revolving loan fund, so we'll take a bit of a nip out of it. Again, revolving loan fund, by definition, was something for economic development, and there's a, something that would revolve. This will be a one-shot deal. So I anticipate, if we have any money left over next year, we'll probably, we'll probably pull out revolving loan fund further, unless we utilize it. But at the same time, this, I'm just letting you know that it's working off capital that we have in the bank right now. So it's not, it's kind of, the flavor's kind of changed, and I just want to let you guys know about it.
And we will be talking about where this would be used sometime in the future?
Yes. Yes. For the 2013, yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions or comments about 4512? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 4512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance 4512 is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 4612, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Buckeye Hills Hocking Valley Regional Development District to administer the city's CDBG revolving loan fund. Member Isley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4612.
Second.
And as the background information that Mayor Wile provided, this will be approximately $200,000, less the $85,000 now, so about $115,000 that the city has available to make, available to organizations as a revolving, as a loan. And it is a revolving loan, so it has a repayment. And I think we, I can say safely that our intent will be by moving with the Buckeye Hills Hocking Valley Regional Development District, as has the County of Athens, that we hope to revitalize this fund, and we have been assured that they have a strong reputation for administering this well.
This has been administered by Enterprise Development?
Enterprise Development Corporation.
Which is dissolved, being dissolved.
Yes. At least they're not going to take it on. They've moved the County Revolving Loan Fund over to the Economic Development Corporation. I had approached them, but they are new to the business, and they're actually utilizing Buckeye Hills for their finance, vetting of the financial side of it. The marketing side, they'll keep up. And again, it behooves us to have, I look at it as a tool and toolbox for economic development. And it's really, the concept of this revolving loan fund is for gap financing, the idea is you have banks in line, you have a loan, and you have a business that you want to expand or keep financed, I guess. Although, really, it's very restrictive what you can do with this, but the idea is for job growth and retention. So I'm hoping that we have it in our tool chest in the future. And the idea is to get it moving and used as best possible. I'm learning a lot about it real quick.
All those in favor of ordinance 4612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Okay. Ordinance 4612 is adopted. Ordinance 4912, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance. Member Isley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4912. And this is amending our appropriation ordinance. And I am sorry, I do not have the notes in front of me for what, 4912?
This is, do you want me to join you? This is just moving money in the CDBG fund for administrative fees, which need to come out of the 300.
This is for the Grosvenor.
And all the money in there is in the 500s right now. So it's no new money, it's moving the $19,400 from 500s to 300s.
And so what it's taking care of is the administrative costs for the Grosvenor CDGB Fund project this year. Moving that over. Thank you.
And the fair housing component.
Any other questions or comments about 4912? All those in favor of ordinance 4912 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance 4912 is adopted. Ordinance 5012, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of telemetry software and radios for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. May I go ahead and move to adopt ordinance 5012?
Second.
This particular ordinance is an upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant, which will allow them to work, this telemetry system will fulfill 2013 FCC narrowbanding requirements and improve overall communications within the city. There was some hesitation, it took a little bit of time to confirm or locate proper software, and this was the fit.
Any other comments about 5012?
One other comment I'll just acknowledge would be, I think $21,000 is to the water fund and another $21,000 to the sewer fund for this particular project.
The software works for both systems.
All those in favor of ordinance 5012 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 5012 is adopted. I think we have one ordinance for second reading. Ordinance 5212, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 39, Wellhead Protection Plan and declaring an emergency, which was introduced by Councilmember Fall. Second reading, we generally don't have much discussion. We'll do that next two weeks. Here we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 5312, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for a Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Fire Act Grant, amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little background information for everyone. We talked about this, I think, way back in, either late January or early February, and the fire chief had sent us some information about this particular grant, and he was really excited about these upgrades, because it will be, I believe, if I understand correctly, replacing 30-year-old technology. It's going to really aid to the safety and overall betterment of the department. It is a statewide system, which will help us communicate more readily with other responding agencies as well. We have a 10% local match, which will reimburse, we will be reimbursed $134,676 of the $149,640. If any other council members wanted to comment as well, I know Member Patterson has communicated with the chief about this as well.
Sure, thank you, Member Butler. Yeah, I concur completely with going forward with this, in that this does replace an old system. It also allows the Athens Fire Department to be able to communicate across the state, not just within the state, within the city itself, but it also clears up a number of the problems to where there are some areas where communications have been difficult at times within the city, it limits itself, and therefore, this will solve that problem with having essentially dropped calls.
If everything works out correctly, the purchase of 22 portable radios, eight mobile radios with associated software and cables, six control point radios, 22 portable radio chargers, eight vehicular repeaters with associated installment accessories, eight mobile chargers and signal amplifiers and accessories, which will total in the range of $149,000.
This is for first reading. Ordinance 50, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a comment, because I believe there's a lot in the news lately related to managing these information systems and communication systems from a federal level as well for disasters and things like that. And so I think when we look back at the water treatment and the information system that's being put in there, I think we're trying to upgrade all of these systems. That's the information I want. Correct, am I right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 5412, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance, decreasing and increasing appropriations in certain funds, introduced by Councilmember Isley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance will be increasing and decreasing in several accounts. The first, and both of these were discussed last week at the committee meeting. The first one is $7,500, and that will be moved from the 101.102 Transaction Code 100 to the Transaction Code 300, to pay for temporary personnel in the tax department in the auditor's office, which is very much needed. The second one is, what we're doing is decreasing the Transportation Assistance Fund by $392,000. And some of you who've been following our work with the Athens City Transit may remember that last, earlier, we, probably last year it was, that we put out a request for proposals and had the Community Action, HAPCAP, as it's known locally, become the designated grantee for our Athens Transit Funds. So what we're doing is, that money had previously been recognized as a resource within the city, that grant is now going to be administered through HAPCAP, so we're transferring it.
Mayor Wile?
Again, this reflects the amount of money we would get normally from the state and the federal transit system. And HAPCAP, since they're administering our grant and our bus system, hopefully more effectively, which is why we, they could devote more time to it. So the 329 reflects a loss of revenue in that sense, or rather than passing through anymore, it's going directly to them. Also, I suspect we probably want to suspend rules on this, so it reflects the fiscal reality, if I'm correct on that or not.
Right.
Mostly because the increase, the transaction class from 100, which is personnel, to 300, which is services, is being used right now for the taxes, right?
Right, right. The auditor's office is a small office with a small budget, and we've already had our temporary person in there about a month and a half and been paying them, and so, yes, we would like that. I'm sorry, I don't know that we discussed that in committee, but.
It seems a reasonable request, given the explanation, so could I ask that we consider this under suspension of the rules, then?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
It has no emergency clause, so appropriate.
Not necessary?
Not necessary.
Okay, we're voting on suspension of the rules now. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 5412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Okay. And may I now move for approval of 5412?
You start.
Adoption.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting ordinance 5412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended, and ordinance 5412 is adopted. And we're moving on to ordinance 5512, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance. Member Isley?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would also like to request that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is, is that the particular items listed in this appropriation ordinance will be considered in state bid, and the deadline for that is April 19th for that state bid, prices to remain in effect.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 5512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? The rules have been suspended. Member Isley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 5512.
Second.
Second.
And.
Any further information?
Yes, I can provide some further information. Well, this has two sections to this particular appropriation ordinance. The first part of it, $3,068 to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, and then $3,069 to the Drug Enforcement Fund. And these are towards the purchase of a vehicle for the police department, and some of these items we discussed last week. And the second part, that some of you may not have been aware of, Councilmember Fall, at a particular point, said, couldn't we consider a vehicle for the DARE program that would be fuel efficient and set a model, so that school students could see this when it's coming? And the police chief and the service safety director have graciously agreed to that, think it's a good idea. And so the second part of this appropriation ordinance, then, is $20,000 to the general fund for a purchase of a vehicle for the code enforcement office that will replace that Prius vehicle that will now be used by the DARE program and the police department.
So, I'm sorry, did we move to?
Yes.
We did? We have a second? Wow. All those in favor of ordinance 5512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign? If you're opposed?
Aye.
Sounds like six to one. Okay, ordinance 5512 is adopted. Ordinance 5612, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to deposit 70% of the transient guest tax revenue collected from January 1st, 2012, through December 31st, 2014, into the tourism fund, introduced by Councilmember Isley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, there was some discussion at the committee level last week, just by way of background, the transient guest tax is a 6% tax that's charged on rooms and hotels and motels in the city. The current, when that money comes into the city, the current split on that is that half of it, 50%, goes to the tourism fund, 50% goes to the general fund. We have contractual obligations with several tourism organizations in the city that currently take 70% of that money. One of the organizations gets a flat 35%, the other one gets another 30, gets 35% also, but has a cap of $55,000. So this particular proposal, what we're saying is, we're with this ordinance suggesting that we deposit 70% of that transient guest tax fund that comes in, and that that go to the tourism fund until we've met our contractual obligations. And so that will be a more realistic distribution of the funds and appropriating them to the, or placing them in the correct accounts as they come in. Once we've met that cap during the year, then it will revert, we will no longer need to do the 70% split in that way.
Question? Ordinance 5712, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the City of Cleveland, Ohio, for services relating to the collection of income tax. Again, Member Isley?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had an excellent presentation, I think, last week from the auditor's office, from Tina, and also from auditor Kathy Hecht, that gave us the information about this central collection. this central collection of municipal income tax. And what this allows for is the, this particular organization to enter into a contract, or it allows, would allow the city to enter into a contract with this collection organization so that we might find through the federal databases that they have access to, people who are needing to pay income taxes to the city but have, for one reason or other, might not have done so. So, we are, the administrative fee that will be collected will be between two and four percent for this contract, that's what the organization will charge the city, but it is no money out, it's only on monies collected. We're also proposing an amnesty period, but we'll be publicizing to the community that between, I believe, June one and June thirty, people will have time to contact the auditor's office if they think they might be, not have paid when they should have.
What will happen with the amnesty program is, we collect fee, interest in penalties when people are late filing, and so we will be working with the taxpayers to ease their burden, sometimes when they don't file, those fees add up, and can become more than their, their base taxes owed, so that will be one, one thing about that. And one other thing I wanted to, I'm not sure is clear about the Central Collection Agency, they actually are a collection agency for the Dayton area, a lot of the little areas around there, and there are other ones in the state of Ohio, Rita is probably the largest one. Small entities, or in this case, a big city, bigger city than Athens certainly, like Dayton, contract out to have someone collect their taxes for them. We do not, and it's my opinion that it's cheaper for us to have two full-time employees than to pay someone an administrative fee to collect our taxes, and it also gives us more flexibility to work with, with our citizens, our local community people, which is one of the reasons that we, you know, are opposed to the state taking over collections for the state. But some entities do contract with someone, however, they do still have tax administrators in, in their city working, but I just want to make it clear that this agency does collect taxes for several other entities, and that it's not just the delinquent taxes that they go after. But that ability that they have is what we are, are going to take advantage of and try to find people.
Member Fall.
So, is there agreement with the city of Cleveland, or, I'm, I'm not understanding that.
Yeah, actually, the Central Collection Agency is, is, is based in Cleveland.
Okay, is it a subdivision of the city?
It's their tax collection agency, but they, I guess if we had the ability to, say, I don't know what I want to say, provide services to another entity, for example, Nelsonville charges a city income tax. If we had the manpower and the ability, we could offer to collect their taxes for them for an administrative fee.
So that's why it's a nonprofit?
Right. It is a nonprofit, and they provide these services, and it's strictly, you know, percentage-based. They mostly recover their costs.
Okay. Thank you.
And they have access to the federal database, which is wonderful.
Yes, this is the only agency in the state of Ohio, as I believe, that has that access. That's unusual, not easy to come by, they, if you would have somebody, they can tell you about the lockdowns and, and things on different floors in their building and things like that, very protective of, of taxpayers' confidentiality.
This is first reading, 5712. Ordinance 5812, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs, project 267, introduced by Councilmember Goss.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is part of a yearly street rehabilitation effort that the city undertakes, and this is, we're proposing this year, we have a list of tentative streets that will be repaved, including, and I'm going to read the list here, if you'll bear with me for a moment, and please bear in mind that this is tentative, and there can be any changes depending on, on the bids that come in for the projects, and also on different infrastructure projects that the city's undertaking throughout the summer. Door Lane, part of Courier Street, Raymond, Boliana Place, Fairview, the asphalt portion, Arden Place, North Schaefer, Montrose, Patton Street, Woodward, Ford Street, due to the, in part to the Boulder incident we had recently, University Terrace, Utah Place, Lamar, Grosner, Canterbury, part of Canterbury there, Rarden, part of Jacobs Drive, West Union Street from Schaefer to High, Joneswood Terrace, Riverview, Harris, Ransom, McGuffey, Columbus Circle, as well as the, we'll be doing brickwork at the very end of Court Street here to smooth out, finish the bricks there. This, these decisions are made based on, by the city engineer's office, based on the condition of the roads that are rated throughout the entire city, and the number of citizens that are served, and sort of how critical these avenues are. And I've been contacted by one resident that was interested in having their street included, but we, we really base these on the condition of the road and the number of those that are impacted by it. We are increasing the funds that are being spent on rehab this year by about twenty-five percent compared to last year, just for the, the street rehab part of our, our city streets work, and so we're asking for four hundred thousand this year for the total rehabilitation on our street.
Councilman Goss is indeed correct, though, last list is actually what's incorporated in our other, our water line repair, our issue one work in Grosner, so. The main transfer of money, or appropriation of money here is for the, the paving of the roadways outside of the projects, we include those in our project costs.
Mayor.
At staff meeting, Director Andy Stone mentioned that the asphalt plants are up and running, so we have hot mix, so if you see potholes, report them.
Thank you. They, they were out today, I saw the crews out.
And there is a, a pothole report form that you can go to, and I think it's under citizen action.
Online.
Online, at this website, so anybody can go on there, and it's a, it's a pretty easy process for logging in.
Okay. Ordinance 5912, a huge title, an ordinance granting a franchise to Ohio Power Company its successors and assigns for the right to acquire, construct, maintain, and operate in the streets, thoroughfares, alleys, bridges, and public places of the city of Athens, state of Ohio, and its successors, lines for the transmission and distribution of electric energy to the city of Athens and the inhabitants thereof for light, heat, power, and other purposes, and for the transmission and distribution of the same within, through, or across said city of Athens, state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by all council members. And you, or not, who's speaking for this? Member Goss.
I would be happy to speak on this. This is something we've been working on for some time with AEP, and it is simply a contract with the city that gives them the privilege to use public land, public right-of-way, in order to maintain the electric, electricity distribution system in the city. We have, under consideration, I believe I need suspension on this. I move that we consider ordinance 5912 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is, I was getting to that in my discussion there, the current contract that we have expires the end of April, and so we need something in place by that time.
We're voting, calling for a vote on suspension of the rules for ordinance 5912. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the rules have been suspended.
So I'll continue my, my description of, of this franchise agreement. One of the things that the city wanted to address initially was tree trimming, which we've fielded complaints for over several years here in the city. So what we're considering now is a, an extension of this contract until the end of this year that includes a section on tree trimming practices, and there were a couple of other items, such as the possibility of charging a franchise fee to fund a, an energy efficiency or renewable energy program in the city that is not under consideration here, but that's why this proposal would go through the end of 2012 to give us more time to work on, on those other issues. But the tree, tree trimming item that is included, I'm going to read one sentence here that I think is pretty important, it says that industry standards for tree care shall be adhered to when performing tree maintenance on city of Athens' own trees. So this is a contract for what occurs in the public right-of-way on, on public property, so we have language in here that states that they will use industry standards when trimming any trees within, within the public right-of-way, and so that's something that we've, we've wanted to see for several years, and I think we've seen some improvement, to be honest, over the last couple of years because of an ongoing dialogue we've had with them. Like I said, this proposal that we'll be voting on here shortly is extended till December thirty-first, 2012, and we'll need a, a more long-term one in place before we reach that And so with that, I move that we adopt ordinance 5912.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5912 signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, take the same sign. Ordinance 5912 is adopted. Thank you. Now we have two resolutions that are going to be free reading resolutions, as I understand. This is the first reading for each of them. Resolution oh-three-twelve, a resolution declaring it necessary to replace existing sidewalk and curbs deemed in poor condition and complete drainage improvements as part of the Grosvenor Slip Project, as part of the Grosvenor Slip Project two-thirty-eight and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Goss.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, the first official step that council is taking to repair sidewalks, and this resolution is in the Grosvenor, on Grosvenor Street, we'll have one following this for some other areas in town. This proposed resolution would initiate the process of assessment in which the city would repair sidewalks in this, on Grosvenor Street, between Fort and Madison, so it's, it's not the entire length of it, that are in poor condition. We would assess property owners for the cost, some of the cost of those repairs, if, if they would choose to do it on their own, they're welcome to, but they would probably get a better deal if, if they were to do it as, as part of the group. The total cost for this is estimated eighty-one thousand dollars, the city takes on the cost for curbs, as well as the ADA ramps that are, that are installed, and the property owner's responsible for the actual sidewalk itself. The amount assessed to the property owners would be thirty-seven thou, an estimated thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, and that may change a little bit as the project gets official estimates and is, is built. Just, just to note that there are different ways to do the assessments, this one is by, assessed by linear front footage, so however much each property has, in terms of however many feet of sidewalk they would have there. And I think that's all, unless the mayor would like to add.
Policy-wise, we have usually charged the property owner for the building, rebuilding of the sidewalks, which is, as Member Gossney mentioned. The process is actually prescribed, described in Ohio Revised Code of how, how it goes. You'd be, you'll be seeing several pieces of legislation coming in front of you for this process. And again, this is, we've done this for Carpenter, we did it for Mill Street, I believe, so this is not a, a new function in the past couple of years that council has undertaken with us.
That's right, we're seeing resolutions rather than ordinances in this case.
I think eventually we have a few ordinances that have to be put in place, but this starts the, the process.
And I think we mentioned it last week, but it's important, just in a long-term picture, that this is part, this is moving forward. Each year now, we're going to be addressing a different area of the city, and the entire, all the city sidewalks have been inventoried and coded as to which ones are in worse condition, so this is part of a long-range plan that we have, and also we're trying to coordinate the sidewalk repairs then with other improvements, so that we're doing, trying to do things in a coordinated fashion at the same time, so I think it's a good idea to move forward with it and keep the city just doing that ongoing maintenance every year.
Resolution oh-four-twelve, a resolution declaring it necessary to replace existing sidewalk and curbs deemed in poor condition on portions of East State Street, Morris Avenue, Grosvenor Street, and Franklin Avenue as part of the North Court area infrastructure project two-fifty-nine and declaring an emergency. Again, Councilmember Goss.
Thank you, and as, as we just discussed with the Grosvenor Street part, this is the same resolution for some different sidewalks that are, are in poor condition in the city. This is a slightly larger project, the amount that will be assessed to ver, to numerous property owners will be estimated at seventy-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, with the total cost of those being ninety, over ninety-six thousand dollars, and so this is a, a larger project than the, the one mentioned previously. Again, assessed by linear footage of, of property or of sidewalk as well, and both of these resolutions will, as soon as we have more firm estimates in, into the city council's office, these will make sure that the property owners are notified as soon as we have firm numbers as to what their individual share will be for the property repairs.
I would just like to add that this is a highly, for people who don't know these streets, these are highly pedestrian-impacted areas and have needed this repair for quite some time, so I'm glad to see that they came to the top of the list, but this is, both these projects are really important, but this specifically, this resolution is a highly pedestrian area, a lot of people walk that every day.
Mayor Boyer.
Okay, and again, remember, we had about three years ago a pedestrian bike pair master plan, and this was part, this is part of the mess of the plan we've been putting out there, so it's folding together quite nicely.
Takes care of ordinances and resolutions. Announcements in other business, announcements, council members, committee meetings?
I'd like one.
Number nine?
Finance, yes, please. That's a standing meeting.
Anybody else? Again, if you see the need of a, of a committee meeting, please just let our clerk know, and we'll take care of it. Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Two weeks ago, I made some comments about, speaking about things that had been talked about, what we think was a, a long time, and there was some discussion about whether city council can control citizen speech as, as we have it now. Actually, we can, Ohio Revised Code says that we have to have open meetings, this is an open meeting, you can watch us do whatever we do, but, but you're not required, we are not required to invite public comment. But Athens City Council has for years, decades, invited public comment, and we're loathe to not do that, so it, unfortunately, to cut off one type of speech, we'd have to cut it all off, so we hope that people just don't abuse the, the process. Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted here. Opportunity for citizens, citizens to speak, do we have people who would like to speak? Sir? We do need you, there should be a slip on the desk where you can sign in, and your time, three minutes, won't start until you got finished signing in.
That was my next question.
It'll flash, it'll flash red at you.
And you got it, right? All right. Well, thank you very much, and I'll try to make my comments brief. I wanted to come here tonight... I wanted to come here tonight, talk about economic development, job creation uptown, and also an idea that could be a step towards a more mixed-use environment uptown. I hear people lament that it used to be, and I went to school here between seventy-three and seventy-five, and there were all different types of shops. Now people say, well, it's got a lot of fast food and bars, and it would be nice if it was more mixed-use. That's what I mean by that. I think this could help, the suggestion. Cards on the table, I have an economic interest in what I'm about to propose to you. I own Uptown Rentals, both student housing and some retail space, and parking. And, and then we invested, proudly invested in O'Bettys at the beginning of the year. And by the way, Bob Satner, he was here, and thank you all, because I think it created an environment where these kind of businesses can flourish, and hopefully it'll go beyond Athens. But it's doing really, really well. We'll add, because this is television, we just added breakfast, and we're about to add the greatest salads in Athens. But anyway, I'll leave that for another day. I know, okay. So the catalyst to coming here tonight was the Carnival-esque trailer at the Corner Estate in Congress. It was surprising to me that that was per code. I went and I said, obviously you can't do this. Oh, yes, you can. Completely, under the current rules, you can do this. And so I said, well, great, here comes High Fest, Palmer Fest, I own parking lots, and I'll put an O'Bettys trailer in. Can't do that. So obviously, there's a way to legislate, not legislate. I would just want you to be mindful of that, and if you could help us with that. The trouble is with these businesses, and I think you know this, that a business in Athens got eight months to make it, and then you got four months of drought when the largest part of the population will hit them, you know, leave town. And so I think you want to be sensitive to that also. I've heard a lot of talk about semesters, two fewer weeks, I've been told. I've had some people do it on paper, but two fewer weeks, so it's going to put an additional burden on, on some of these businesses. So, you know, if we all say to turn around the economy, we're going to have to have job growth, and it's going to be small business, I think we're right in the wheelhouse of that. Now, what I suggest, you know, if you have a, a problem, you should come up with a solution. I'd like you to take a look at three things. One, revamping the, the trailer ordinances. You know, I think the A, B, and C, it hasn't been looked at in a long time. What is the annual fees? Do you have to put money in the meter? Who's got them? Are any more available? How many times you have to show up? There's certainly been a lot of things that I think could do that. And at fourteen hundred dollars a year for an A, I think I've got this right, I got to tell you something, you're competing against businesses that are, you know, you're coming in opportunistically. The fall and the spring are the big times. Bang, you show up, whoops, and I'm done.
Quickly.
Okay. The other thing I'd ask you to do is think about running your meters seven days a week, your parking meters. And then, and then what happens is, at the time when the students, when the students are not in town, then suspend meters altogether to get more mixed juice up into the environment. And the third one for Halloween, don't let out-of-town trailers in. Let businesses who are already there bring onto the sidewalk, the streets are already empty, and you can go ahead now, and help the businesses become stronger that are already there.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, sir, you did sign in, but I, the other step was to introduce yourself.
Okay, Alan McMillan, two oh-nine East State Street, proudly, Athens, Ohio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alan, could you put your notes in as a public record?
Sure. I will email them, just hand them in.
Yeah, that would be great. Give them to the clerk.
Oh, I did spell it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak, sir?
I have six minutes.
Are you a team?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six minutes, right.
Right, no six minutes, no.
Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity to present today. Am I good, we good to go ahead and start?
Please introduce yourselves.
Okay, great. My name's Chris Wimsat, I'm the Treasurer of Student Senate, I'm also the Chairman of the Why No Expo Task Force.
And I am Joel Newby. I'm the Arts and Sciences Senator for Student Senate of Ohio University, and I sit on the task force also. We are here today to talk about what we call Oxbow Lane, or Bobcat Lane, and we find that there's portions of the city code that currently say that that part, portion of street is technically legal. The first one is in twenty-one, point zero five, point ten B. It says that there should be no, that there cannot be a permanent dead-end street, and temporary dead-end streets are permitted, but that's part of like, if there's continuing street plans. Then in the same section, it's Part C, says that a cul-de-sac street cannot exceed the length of a thousand feet, measured from the center of the radius of the turnaround. I think, I don't know how, whether you guys are of that entire road area, but the turnaround would be located behind Boyd Hall, Ryers Hall Two, and it would run completely out to the nearest artery, which would technically be South Green Drive. By opening up Bobcat Lane, that makes that, the nearest artery at that point, Richland Avenue, which is more conducive to the code at that point.
And I've been told, I've been told in newspaper clippings that the section of code we're referring to is, is code, as it relates to subdivision. And we've been told that that's, that this portion of road that we're talking about does not apply as a subdivision. Well, according to the legal definition of subdivision in city code twenty-one, eleven, oh-one, subdivision is any parcel of land shown as a unit or as contiguous units in the last preceding tax rule, and it tore more parcels. I'm sure, I'm sure I'm going to run out of time here soon, I'm sure if you review that. Well, what I'm curious to know is what part of the legal definition of subdivision are we, is this exempt from? And, you know, that's, that's, that's really supposed to be a question. I'm really just, I'm really just kind of confused that I, I'm not a lawyer, so maybe Law Director Link could probably set me straight on that. But we've got independent, we've got independent studies, we've got university-commissioned studies, and I'm pretty sure the city has commissioned some studies in the past, but the study that I've got my hands on from two thousand nine shows conclusively that opening the stretch of road wouldn't be a bad idea, and whether or not we open it ultimately, you know, I don't think this is a decision that needs to be made here right off the bat, but I do think that this is the dialogue that we need to start up. And I know the dialogue's been had before, but never from a student and city perspective, it's always been from a university-city perspective. And I think that ultimately, students are going to be the sole, or not sole, but are going to be some of the benefactors, should, should the road get open, and they're going to be the ones that have to suffer if the road doesn't. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The people wanting to speak? No? Okay, we're gonna, excuse me?
The baby.
Oh, the baby. Okay, she's been speaking. Okay, we are going to go into executive session, which means that the audience needs to leave. It's eight twenty-eight. We'll give you ten minutes to ask questions of councilmembers, and you need to leave, and city council is going to go into executive session to include councilmembers, the mayor, the Service Safety Director, the auditor, and the law director. Did I miss anybody?
We need a motion, second.
We need a motion.
Motion that we move into executive session with all those mentioned by the president to attend. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does it need a roll call vote?
Roll call, we did, I thought. We all went down.
It's a simple, a straightforward.
They just went very quickly.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much lower this time. Okay, so we've taken the vote, ten minutes from now, we, we need to ask you to leave, but you do have ten minutes to talk to your councilmembers if you need to.